Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Members of the audience. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you my superintendent finals presentation. First 100 days. Purpose of this action plan is to outline the events that will take place during the first 100 days of the school year of 2021 and 2022 school year. This process is designed to identify ideas and build positive work and impactful initiatives that are currently underway. And the strengthening of the district's successful traditions while also focusing on our future. And the development of best practice structures and programs to improve student learning outcomes and performance. Also to improve our regional processes. This plan will provide an opportunity for me to continue to engage in open dialogue with our staff. At all levels throughout the organization to grow relationships with district stakeholders. And local regional organizations and to most importantly actively listen to key staff. To even better understand the needs and desires of our Redford community. Our first and primary focus area. Is student learning and performance. And that's because first and foremost as a superintendent with the instructional leader of the district. Which are also the one primarily responsible for student outcomes. Their learning and performance. That is something I fully understand. The objective here is to increase student learning outcomes and performance. And to provide for learning acceleration in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. Through improved leadership, instruction, intervention, supports. And a culture of continuous improvement. We want to reach all students through what we do. And encourage not to each high levels of academic achievement based on their unique abilities and needs. I fully realize we we not only operate general education programs in this in our district, but also center-based programs. And that are full of students with unique abilities and needs and we need to make sure as we make decisions. And to provide for the student outcomes for all students. Jump ahead there, some of the keys here are to establish a common language around student achievement or student outcomes. To identify patterns and gaps in student outcome data. And to help work as a with administrative team with stakeholders, including our teachers on the front line. To develop courses of action and interventions to address those gaps. We want our online district curriculum pre-K through 12 and our instructional interventions. To ensure for both horizontal and vertical alignment of our curriculum that is rigorous, relevant. And also culturally responsive. With an emphasis on our core subjects. We want to continue ongoing planning with administrators about. Learning plans to accelerate the learning of our students that are already in the works such as our summer school plan. Summer school programming and learning opportunities to accelerate student learning during the school year. We need to look at opportunities next year and work with the stakeholders to identify meaningful opportunities with our administrators and our teachers. To help meet our students' needs through potentially extended school day or extended school week opportunities. Like many other districts in the area. And we need to continue ongoing discussions with our administrators and teachers and this is a process already underway. To enhance our educator evaluation process in a way that helps to positively impact not only teacher growth, but student learning as well. Another important area is governance. And that's to establish the board and the superintendent as a cohesive governance team with a primary focus on improving student outcomes and performance. Again, we need to be about we need to be student focused and focused on bringing about and helping improve their outcomes and their overall performance and meeting our students' needs. We would do that through setting up a board retreat, identifying a facilitator for that retreat. Also, I hope to establish a regular meeting time on a regular basis to meet with the board president. And I also want to establish a process of expectations for responding to stakeholders' concerns, comments, and feedback. Along with conducting meetings with the individual board members. So I can learn more about their history with Redford community, their priorities to our district. And their perspectives and advice related to Redford community. I know each of you have a history here, not only within the township, but within the school district. And I want to embrace that and I want to learn further learn about some of the Redford community traditions. Also in this area, I want to build a positive, productive, and trusted working relationship with individual board members. Over my first 100 days, I want to establish regular communication protocols with the board. Through weekly or bi-weekly superintendent updates. Through an increased number of board workshops on important topics. And through reigniting some of the subcommittees that we have had that we haven't been utilizing to their full capacity in my opinion. Also need to establish a schedule for periodic meetings with individuals with board members to discuss matters facing our district and positive resolutions to those matters. My third focus area is in the area of climate and positive culture. The objective here is to establish a clear and decisive strategy to address issues related to school safety, security, and district climate. And building climate in some cases. We need to provide opportunities for stakeholder input and to the development of our Redford values. Which would be our own norms and beliefs that we want to embrace and embody as a district. In the front of the book, there is an example of what those Redford values may look like. It's not a final product. Again, you need stakeholder input into the development of those things. I want to be in our schools regularly. Some may ask if that has happened already. I can tell you there are buildings I've been to more often than others. During my time as first superintendent and then superintendent since March. But I also hope folks will understand full well that this is not the typical school year. And in the middle of the pandemic, I'm not able to be quite as visible as I would otherwise hope to be going forward. I want to continue my regular meetings with key central office staff and building administrators to learn even more. About every school, every program, and every department we have. And to develop usually expectations and roles. To meet the learning and social emotional needs of our students and to support staff's success and well-being. I would conduct monthly meetings with central office staff and building administrators to review our goals. That's how you shape accountability. Is frequently revisiting your goals and discussing people's roles and supporting those district goals. And that includes not only discussing administrator's role in carrying out district goals and priorities. And the mission and vision of this district, but also all staff members play an important part in what we are able to accomplish as a school this year. Schedule additional meetings with union leaders, a mutual open bargaining unit to discuss common goals and ways of working together to achieve district goals. One of the biggest examples I had to date of this is when I pulled all of the union leaders together. And met with them relative to support of this important bond proposal that is on the ballot next week on May 4. Continue to invest in an interest-based bargaining process. We will be doing that process next week with two of our support staff bargaining units. And there's hope that over time we can potentially expand that process to other bargaining units. And also provide opportunities for district staff to share student outcomes and successes and ideas for district improvement. Including letting us know about support staff need to carry out the things we're asking them to do. Continue to work with local and regional entities and staff to further develop and improve and communicate school safety plan. And security plans. We want to ensure school safety is a priority within all facility improvement discussions. We want to make sure that all staff are aware of our school safety plans. Our families need to know when they send their students here. That they will be safe within this environment. And we've done a lot of that not only from general security, but also with regards to the COVID-19 pandemic that we have been dealing with throughout since last March. Review and analyze existing student attendance discipline data. Look at those policies and practices, again with an emphasis on restorative practices. I think it will be important with ideally many more of our students returning to in-person learning next fall. To reinforce and reemphasize the importance of restorative practice as more and more students begin to come back to our buildings. We want to review and assess our current partnerships with township, with the county. And with other community entities to maximize a functional approach to school safety and security. We need to reach out to experts on school safety and security. That may be our township police department, it may be others. And we need to make sure we have a functional approach to keeping our students safe and secure. In this case, in this climate, that also includes Wayne County Health Division, who I communicate with on a regular basis. About specific cases of student positives and staff positives. And close contacts within the district throughout this pandemic. Want to further evaluate, assess district supports for students and staff in the area of social and emotional health and counseling support. We need to be sure we're looking at the whole child. And we also need to make sure we're attending to the social and emotional needs of our staff as well. And looking for ways to do more for them in terms of wellness and their overall well-being. And that goes well beyond physical wellness. It includes their social, emotional wellness, and also their financial wellness. Focus area four, instructional and operational best practices. My objective here. Over those first 100 days is to review and solidify organizational expectations and ensure alignment of priorities with district vision. I can tell you that this would be a focus of that board retreat. That I referenced earlier in my presentation with the focus area of governance. And working to build a very positive working relationship with each of the board members on the Board of Education. That would involve reviewing our strategic plan, getting information from internal stakeholders. Regarding our district vision and priorities and how conform our decisions with regards to those vision, that vision and priorities. Identifying and communicating where we are and where we will be as a district based on input received from internal and external stakeholders. And further determine and communicate strategic priorities as aligned to the district's vision to all stakeholders. Another objective is to continue to assess and know upon the strengths of our district team. To achieve increased efficiency, outcomes, and support for our schools, students, staff, and families. We need to look at and consider our current administrative structure. And our current support operations and find ways to enhance the outcomes and the service delivery that those individuals provide. In those first 100 days, I want to make it a priority to fill existing administrative openings with proven committed educational leaders. And I want to seek out, and I believe as an organization this is important, that I not only do this, but others do this, including administrators and teachers. Seek out and learn from instructional and operational best practices from our peers both within the region and beyond. We need to look to like districts with similar demographics. And we need to find out potentially if they're doing things better than we are in certain areas. They're addressing learning gaps that we have that the data shows we have. If we're lacking in some operational best practices, we need to learn from others. We're a learning organization and that's what we need to be about. Finally, a couple of assurances. First of all, there's no doubt that I prescribe, I'm a team player. I've been an athlete my entire life. I understand the importance of team. And our critical important work will be done together. I assure you that. I assure you. That in many ways and many ongoing items right now that we're moving forward, that work is already being done together. And also please be assured that during this phase, the day-to-day operations within our district. Will continue simultaneously as I approach this first 100 days. And the and address the items that I've identified in each of these focus areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, all board members will be asking questions. Moving forward, all board members will be asking questions. What do you perceive are the most qualifying characteristics of a successful school year and a successful superintendent?
I think. The things that are most important in assuring a successful school year is the planning oftentimes that goes into the school year first and foremost. There's been no timer that's been more important than all the planning we did and put it together. We turned to learning plans both in the fall. And ultimately in the winter. The planning is critical. Right now, I can tell you, we're already planning for next school year by planning extensively. For our summer school program that we hope to provide for a greater number of students will take advantage of within our community than probably ever have taken advantage of summer school before. And there will be kindergarten through 12th grade opportunities for our students within that summer program. I think in the way as we look at creative ways to accelerate the learning for students in our district. That planning is important. The summer school is critical. We also need to plan. And it's important to do this for what next school year will be. And I can tell you these discussions have already begun and are also underway. We need to make sure that we are providing meaningful opportunities to address the learning loss experienced by our students. And we need to potentially utilize and maximize some of the FEDCO funding that we have available to do some very important things. We need to provide extended learning opportunities for our students in some form and some fashion. Both during the school week and even potentially on the weekend. We again have preliminary discussions around that. The planning is critical. Another thing that's important to the school year. Is setting goals for the school year. And working with the different stakeholders to establish those goals. And then to monitor those goals and the progress towards those goals throughout the school year. In many respects, my 100-day plan, my entry plan into the 2021, 2022 school year. Is a means of a plan that includes measures of accountability within it. And expectations of things to be accomplished over that period of time. And I think as we. Set the stage for the coming school year, we need to make sure that each building has goals that they want to attain. And we need to make sure individual teachers set goals through the evaluation process that they want to see attained. And even departments where we're looking to make improvements and implement best practices. Are going to be asked to set goals and monitor the progress towards those goals throughout the school year. I also agree with regards to what makes a successful superintendent. I think it's accessibility. I know it's genuinely willingness to listen. You cannot walk up to any room and assume that you already know the direction you need to take. And come across as if you have all the answers. We need to appreciate the input from the various stakeholders within this district as important decisions are made. And ultimately, we need to weigh those decisions first and foremost through the lens of. How will this impact and how will this potentially help or how might this hinder our students? Our students need to be the primary lens against which we make decisions. I believe a successful student, a successful superintendent puts student needs first. And works with their people to identify throughout the organization, works with their people. To identify solutions that are going to help address students' needs, whether those be learning needs or social emotional needs.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Vice President, Ms. Hudson.
Tell us about any bond or reconstructing project you have in the department.
I've had the fortunate ability in two different school districts, one in Wayne County and one in Oak County, to be a part of the bond project. When I arrived at Allen Park Public Schools, they were on the tail end of the bond project. But there was still significant construction taking place. And because of the potential impact and upset because of honestly the potential accessibility of certain spaces within certain buildings. And how that might impact our staff. Even in the role of director of personnel and employee services in that district, I was pulled into the conversations. About the impact of the ongoing construction, about the timing of certain projects. And along with the superintendent, we worked out a plan that allowed our students and staff to safely carry out or daily carry out on a daily basis within our schools. While also enabling construction within other areas of the building to safely move forward. So that was my first case of the bond experience. When I went to Troy School District, Troy School District, while I was there, ultimately passed a $125 million bond project. And a new superintendent took over during that time period. The bond was actually passed under the previous superintendent. A colleague of mine moved up from an assistant superintendent of secondary instructional position into a role as superintendent within Troy Schools. And given my background and experience working in the areas of education law and my familiarity with contracts, contracts and major projects. He asked me to expand my duties beyond the human resources and labor relations functions to also take on a role as the owner's representative for the district within that bond project. So in that role, I had the opportunity to become very familiar with the bond process, very familiar with the bidding process on construction projects. I got to meet some of the inspectors who work through the state because it's a state-run project for education. And I had the ability and opportunity to sit down regularly with our architect, with our contractors. And have those discussions about the status of certain projects. And my main responsibility was to make sure that where there were change orders or where there were things not taking place and deadlines not being met. My main goal was to interact with those contractors and make sure that the projects were cut on time and on budget. And where those weren't, I delved into the reasons why and worked with those entities to find solutions to get us that contract and on budget.
Thank you. Secretary Robinson.
I'm sorry. What does the term accountability mean to you?
That's an excellent question. I can tell you accountability is something that I emphasize. It's a value I hold, something I emphasize to I know our administrative leadership team in multiple discussions we have. I believe it's taking ownership for your actions and/or the outcomes of your actions. And when it comes to plans or strategies that you implement, accountability comes through putting measures in place. That will allow you to monitor and assess the impact of those plans or strategies. I think, and I've been in districts where this has happened. We. And I would dare say that I've learned of instances here where this has happened. And it's not out of ill will or bad intention. But there are times we adopt certain strategies and look to implement those strategies. And at times, before we've even measured the outcomes of those strategies. Or given those strategies a time to take full hold, which includes allowing staff to learn the strategies. Allowing our students to become familiar with some of those strategies. Sometimes there have been instances where somebody else has gone to a different conference and learned about a different strategy. And then they've come back and all of a sudden they're switching strategies before we've really even measured the outcomes of those things. Accountability means that once we implement something, we're going to follow through on it. And we're going to determine what the outcomes are. We're going to try to carry out the implementation of things with fidelity. And then we're going to measure our success and be transparent with our community and with this Board of Education. About the levels of success or the concerns that arose as we look to implement those plans in our strategy. And if needs arise that have to be addressed within the implementation process, part of being accountable is being responsive for finding solutions to address those needs.
Christy Holoya.
Hi.
Hi.
How involved are you in funding issues at the state level? Describe your relationships with government officials, both state and local.
One area I need to improve upon locally is establishing. Deeper relationships with our legislative and local leaders. And that's something, that's the reason why that was a point of emphasis within my 100-day entry plan. I would say this, I have met with local leaders already. To explain the important initiatives that we're looking to develop through this upcoming bond proposals. And I communicated with them regularly in an effort to garner their support for the bond. And I'm pleased to say that those township officials that I've been able to meet with, that I've been successful in garnering their support. They're the first ones to be contacting Mr. Mike Taylor to get a yard sign when a yard sign is available. But deeper than that, I do have experience in my previous districts and even at the community college level of working with our state legislators. My local legislature, actually where I reside, calls me his education consultant. And I have at times met him for breakfast when there was pending legislation impacting public schools. And he wanted me to be a sounding board and answer questions that he had around the proposed legislation. That some of those are opportunities that I readily welcome and I'd like to participate in. I've also had the opportunity to testify in front of committees at the state legislative level. And I also regularly attend our superintendent meetings at Wayne Reesaw. I regularly and frequently email our lobbyists at Wayne Reesaw on legislative issues. And on issues even with state agencies that have arisen from time to time during this COVID-19 pandemic. I also know legislative lobbyists that work more at the state level and not just at Wayne Reesaw, although our Wayne Reesaw lobbyist obviously spends a significant amount of his time in Lansing as well. So those are contacts I have. I do need to, again, deepen the relationships with our legislators here specifically that's turned with Redford Township. that's turned right from township in our district. And that is something I've committed to doing.
Thank you. Trustee Bailey.
How will you go about developing strong relationships with all the members of this board?
I set some of that forward in my entry plan, but I'll go back to that. I think when it comes to board governance, I think, again, we need to identify as much common ground as possible and really work to make our primary focus be on including student outcomes and performance. And I think that's an issue, that's a situation and a goal that everyone at this board table can unite around. And I want to be a willing partner with the board in that. That's the importance of the board retreat. That's the importance of my meetings that I want to establish in those first 100 days and conduct with individual board members. And then those are also, the other way is to continue to communicate with this Board of Education, but to do so at more regular and expected times. So I want to create, and this is something I contribute to in other districts, I want to establish a regular superintendent's communication, whether that goes out every Friday or every other Friday. Quite honestly, it depends on some of the discussion we have with the board. I want to meet this board's expectations with regards to regular communication. I also do think it's important that while communication takes place, it's important to understand and identify the role of the superintendent, the role of administrators within this district, and also the role of board members. And I think if we can come to a common understanding about what those roles are, that communication will flow more freely than maybe it has in some past instances. And I also want to work to build trust with this board. Because there are sensitive matters that come across not only in my desk, but there are sensitive matters that are brought to your attention. And I think it's important that we remember, as I touched on in my first interview, that communication is a two-way street. And I don't want to play gotcha with any of you. And I would hope that you don't want me to play gotcha back. And that's not how I operate. I want to be transparent. I want to communicate on the important issues that need communication. And then in addition to those regular communication protocols and those official meetings with each individual board member, I want to expand upon our board workshops that in a more informal setting where no action is anticipated, items that are important to this Board of Education can be discussed, information can be exchanged, views can be exchanged, questions can be asked and answered. And I believe that's how we work to build the type of government's team that not only, I'm sure, everyone in this group hopes to be, but that this community deserves.
Thank you.
Trustee Gray.
In a situation where trust is broken, how will you go about rebuilding that trust?
I think you need to reflect upon the circumstances that led to that break in trust. And you need to go to a source or the sources. I think you need to be willing to admit instances where you may have been wrong or you may not have acted in the manner that you would have preferred to act or responded in a manner you may not have wanted to respond to. I believe you build trust back by making sure, again, to own up and be accountable for any part you may have had in the breakdown of that trust. And also work to make amends and to work to agree upon a new path forward to rebuild that trust. I think you build that trust back by regularly having interactions with the people whose trust you may have lost. I also think you have to, again, be willing to admit anything that you may have done wrong, to work to right those wrongs and to work to develop a new path forward to build trust. You need to increase your transparency in your communication and also your visibility. And improving your visibility and accessibility can go a long way to restoring trust in instances where trust has potentially been broken.
Thank you. Trustee Cryer.
What's your idea of the Classroom of the Future?
It's a great question. First and foremost, the Classroom of the Future is one that works for our students. And I think by that, I mean, there are students who have unique needs. And I'll use our secondary program students at Stuckey as an initial example. We're fortunate enough to be blessed with these bond proceeds. And I've shared this with staff at Stuckey in our presentations and communication with them. We need to realize the unique needs of the students within the spaces that we intend to serve those students. And that means there shouldn't be necessarily a cookie cutter classroom in the future for all students. We need to, again, identify those unique needs that certain students have within certain buildings or within certain spaces within buildings. And we need to create classroom environments that work for them. And I believe to do that, we need to get impact input not only from the students, but from the frontline educators who operate in those spaces as well. I can tell you one example of that that relates back to some bond experience I had is the best way to settle on what furniture, what new furniture you should look to provide in a bond project is to get a bunch of samples of furniture and let the students come and sit in the furniture and see how they interact in the furniture. That's the best way that you can make smart decisions about the classroom of the future for those particular students. I also believe firmly, and I've said this even in discussions with our bond steering committee, before COVID, we were talking about this bond project and it wasn't as initial infancy. I would have answered that question probably differently. I would have viewed a more traditional classroom, but with upgraded spaces and upgraded furniture and equipment in those categories. The Classroom of the Future to me allows for more project-based work and collaborative work to take place between students. To do that, we need some more open spaces to allow for those things to happen. Small group interactions, again, project work, that's part of the space. I also firmly believe, let's use our secondary campus that we hope to create in the near future and work with stakeholders to identify those spaces. I believe we have a portion of our students who, because of their experience with virtual learning, virtual learning where it has been a positive, there are a portion of our students that maybe never want to come back to the traditional setting or at least if they have an option, not come back to the traditional classroom setting for all the periods of schooling. So when we look at that secondary campus, I think just because of the fact that they're virtual learners doesn't mean they still shouldn't be welcome within the walls of the building. They should be welcome within the walls of the building. And we need to potentially create some spaces. And yes, this is going to take creativity, this is going to take creativity with staffing, it's going to take creativity with design. But we need to creatively with our technology. But we need to creatively provide spaces that potentially allow students who even out have chosen a virtual option for a portion of their day or a full part of their day to know they're welcome within the walls of that building because maybe there they feel more safe and secure. But they have spaces, dedicated spaces within the building to go to where they can be spread out and they can engage in virtual learning. And potentially we have to find ways to staff academic supports for those same students that are staffed by other individuals outside of the traditional classroom setting. So that to me is what the Classroom of the Future looks like. It's one that is specifically designed to meet unique student needs. It's one that allows for collaboration as well as a traditional instructional approach. But it's also one that is a school of the future that allows students to learn and take advantage of virtual learning opportunities as well within the buildings. I can give you one last example of that. Just this year, you know, we run the Veritas Alternative Bad Program here. We opened the doors to a couple students because the feedback that Ms. Jane was receiving was that student wasn't making any progress in their classes because of their home environment. And in that particular case, they almost begged, Ms. Jane, can I come to the walls of this building here? And we knew we could provide a safe space, we knew we could provide the technology. And that to me was an easy solution because the student had a need and we had a way to meet that need. And that to me is where we need to go with the Classroom of the Future.
Amid the national teacher shortage, amid an ongoing pandemic, what will you do to both retain teachers and incentivize teachers to come to this district?
First of all, one important stat that we've already taken and we've done this recently and we're now working to implement this is in the past, I've worked in a number of districts where we have had an online application system that led us to have a very, very broad pool of candidates whenever we had any opening, whether it was a teacher opening, an administrator opening, or any other opening within the organization. In the past, this has been discussed here within this district, but for whatever reasons, be it budgetary constraints or else, we never move forward with that process of bringing in the online application, which is actually provided as an option for us by the same group that we use to manage our staff absentee tracking system. So I'm pleased to say that having experience with these online application systems in prior places and previous educational organizations, not only K-12, but also at the community college level, we are moving forward with bringing that system on board. And I believe, I know what that's going to do. Right now, when we advertise positions, you really have to go to the Redford Union Schools website to find those opportunities. So basically, you have to know someone within Redford Union that knows of an opening to draw you to their website. Now, that's not to say that attempts haven't been made to post some jobs elsewhere because we post them on different school-related sites. Sometimes posting on some of those sites has an extensive fee. Right now, the online system that we're working to implement will broadcast out to a much broader scope of candidates and applicants. And we know that will increase the number of applicants we get for an open position. With regard to retaining staff, I think we need to make sure that staff know they're going to be supported with the resources they need to meet the needs of our students within the classroom. We have a unique opportunity with the federal funding we're receiving to make sure that we're providing those resources to our teachers. And as more and more of those funds become available, we need to engage our stakeholders and make sure we're providing those resources they need for them. Another experience I have that goes towards retaining staff is in Troy School District, we operated a program called the Troy Academy of Learning Leaders that I launched while I was there. It was, ended up receiving state recognition from the Human Resources Organization, school administrators. But that program is intended to help develop teacher leaders and help prepare them and give them real hands-on opportunities to experience some of our, some of the things that our administrators deal with on a daily basis. That's a program that I hope to replicate here. And again, the goal is to provide mentorship opportunities, to provide a deeper understanding of district of operations to the participants in that program and to give them real life, hands-on opportunities to experience being a school administrator or even being a central office administrator. So that's another way that I hope to retain our teachers. Finally, I know full well that our finances have been limited in the past and our finances are not, haven't gotten to a point where they're infinite yet. They are limited still. But we need to make sure that we're taking care of our staff with regards to compensation. And I assure you that our proposals and our progress in negotiations will push towards providing opportunities to put more money in the hands of our teachers that may not be always in the form of base salary compensation. I think we need to realize that teachers, in some cases, are struggling financially for a variety of ways, or reasons, including student loan debt, including ongoing classes that they're taking to improve themselves and grow as educators through college programs and graduate programs. And I think we need to also make sure that we are finding ways to offset some of their expenses within those programs if possible. I believe that's a big draw. I believe that that would be a big recruiting standpoint to be able to have some of those programs in place to earmark a specific portion of our general fund dollars to help students, to help our teachers, sorry, pay off their student loans. And the longer they stay, the more money they get to draw from that fund. That's an incentive to retain teachers. Another thing I think we need to realize, and this is important, we need to realize that today's generation of teachers, even those graduating currently from college or education programs, are really not looking for that watch at the end of a 30-year career. Today's generation, and it's not just in education, it's in other professions as well, they will be content to do one profession or one job for a three to five to maybe seven-year period. And then all of a sudden, something else is going to take their interest. So we need to, we can recruit teachers by increasing our starting pay for teachers, by making sure we have the ability and retain the ability to give new hires credit for previous teaching experience, but also other educational related experience. And I think that is critical. The other thing that I believe strongly in, and this is a long-term project, but I believe we would be able to attract more teachers by trying to develop business partnerships. For example, with Ford Motor Company or any of the motor companies, where those engineers who are younger in their career, maybe there's an opportunity to create partnerships where they can come and teach for a semester or they can come and teach for a full school year. year. Or maybe if they can teach a portion of the school day and they can work through an alternative certification avenue in order to get their certification. I believe that those type of partnerships are out there. I know MBE has a lot of alternative certification plans and ways teachers, other than going through a school's college of education, can attain their teaching certificate. And I think especially in those STEM areas, that would be a great source, resource for us to work, to at least have discussions and try to develop a partnership to be able to bring in experienced professionals to do those things. I also believe as we look to hope to expand our career tech opportunities for our students, that we can partner with units and trade organizations, and much the same way as I just described, to get some of their experienced tradespeople in various areas of skilled trades to potentially be the lead teachers within our career tech ed programs. And again, there are pathways available through the Michigan Department of Education for individuals with those real-life experiences to take an alternative approach to getting a teacher certificate and being able to teach those specific courses. So I think we need to explore all those avenues.
What does President Robinson?
What do you do to draw in non-school community members?
Think a great way to do that within this community, and I think sometimes, again, this falls in the category of learning from others, and not necessarily always needing to recreate the real. But I like the idea of reaching out to our senior citizens within this community. Now, this is of course, once we get beyond the COVID-19 experience. And making sure that they are aware of the athletic events and the performing arts events that are taking place within our schools. And we need to actively look to invite them and potentially even provide some of their transportation to attend those events. So that's one way. I also believe we need to make sure that we provide even non-school families within this district, we need to market the fact to them, or I should say promote the fact to them, opportunities to utilize our facilities from time to time, and to access our facilities for different things. I can give you the biggest example, and this goes back to, I guess, a bottom wish list. But if we are able to establish expanded career tech opportunities for our students within an expanding space at our secondary campus, I think, and I know of other communities that have been able to create major spaces for the community that access during non-school hours. So if we have certain equipment that people in our community can use, I'll give you an example. 3D printers are something that has been used. Specific equipment for woodworking and those type of things. And those are called major spaces, and again, they take many different forms. If we use bond proceeds because our community supports this bond election and it allows us to create some of those facilities, we need to find opportunities to allow the community to have access to those facilities and promote the use of those facilities as well. So I think that's another way to draw in the non-school community and to really give them resources that they, to do things and to produce products that they otherwise might not be able to do without access to some of the equipment that we hope to provide for our students.
Secretary Robinson.
Sometimes we are in situations where our role is less about being the one to come up with creative ideas and more about facilitating the creative process or helping others get their ideas implemented. Describe a time when you played this type of role. What did you do and what were the results?
I think one key example of that, where I would come to set, is in the Troy School District, where we had an opportunity, and again, this was an opportunity that was really a collaborative partnership between all, many areas in the departments of the school district, but in particular, the curriculum department and myself. And that is, we created what are called teacher labs. And I guess, for a descriptor standpoint, think of medical rounds that intern doctors take. And there's a, there's a notion, a concept called instructional rounds that's being used now more in education centers. And it's a similar type process to what you would imagine or have seen with regards to medical rounds, where a group of educators is literally going from one classroom to the next, and they're assessing and observing what's going on in that classroom, and then they're reading afterwards to debrief about what they saw going well, what they saw that could be improved upon, and those type of things. Teacher Labs takes that experience of instructional rounds to a whole new level. So in Troy School District, I had the opportunity to facilitate and support the implementation of teacher labs. And more specifically, using a format similar to instructional rounds, teacher labs explore a specific targeted strategy, which while instructional rounds kind of looks at everything taking place in the classroom, teacher labs are focused on a specific targeted intervention that a particular teacher either has been asked to do, or has wanted to initiate within their classroom and wants feedback on from other educators as to how that is going. And how I worked to facilitate that in that particular case was I had, I provided the resource of time to allow for those things to take place. And what does that mean? It means we utilized a core of building subs to make sure that the people who were involved in the teacher labs had the freedom to be present during those teacher labs. And it's more than a process of just dropping in the classroom. It's typically a half-day type experience. By the time, you usually engage in a learning activity on the front, that also includes the teacher, the host teacher, who is going to be implementing that strategy. You then go observe that teacher in their implementation of the strategy, and then you have to provide release time for that teacher to meet with the group that was involved in the teacher lab so they can debrief together about their observations. And I think that's a clear example of two things. One, it's important that we provide resources to our people to carry out what they're being asked to implement within the classroom. And I also firmly believe, that also ties into the fact that we need to, some of the best professional development activities that can take place in the school are not going to a conference for day, for a date and hearing about a strategy and bringing that back and maybe sharing it out with your fellow staff members, or maybe not, and maybe choosing to implement it within your classroom, or within your building, or at a grade level, or that. Some of the greatest and most valuable and meaningful professional development opportunities that we can provide for our staff, our job, embedded professional development, such as the instructional rounds, such as the teacher labs that I've mentioned, I've had experience with participating in instructional rounds. I've been in people's classrooms during the instructional rounds and during teacher labs, and I've been in part of the entire process. And I believe that we need to find ways to provide the resource of time to allow, and opportunities to allow that type of job, embedded professional development to take place, in addition to other professional development opportunities that we continue to provide our teachers.
Trustee Kovaile. Tell us about a time when you created a work environment in which people wanted to do their best. How did you create that climate?
I think the example that most specifically comes to mind with regards to that, and it's a process that I'm also beginning to engage in, in here in Redford Union. But at Oakland Community College, while I was there, we developed under a new leadership team, we took steps to upgrade, update the college's strategic plan, their mission, their vision statement, and really the priorities for the organization. The next step was, as the leader of a key department within that college, was to make sure that those employees who reported to me were not only aware of those new mission, vision, and strategic priorities, but we had intentional discussions at our binding staff meetings about how they were impacting, how, what the work they did tied into at least as many of those strategic priorities as possible, about experiences they had where they had lived out the mission of the district, and we discussed those opportunities. I also believe another critical, critical point in getting that line in from all staff members and what we're doing is to challenge staff to create goals, not only around their own development, but at least one specific goal on an annual basis that ties back to one or more of the strategic priorities that we have within the district. So again, sometimes it's easy for operational staff to think, well, I just sit over here at Keeler and alls I do is make sure the payroll is correct, or I make sure we're assigning information to the right account lines, and make sure we have a clean audit. I think we need to engage all stakeholders across this district as we potentially look to reshape some of our strategic priorities. That includes key conversations with the folks here on the Board of Education. But once those have been established, we need to make sure that the leaders of each program and each department are working with their staff to not only share that mission, that vision, and those strategic priorities, but also to challenge them to see how they fit and make a commitment and contribution to those different areas and those different
Trustee Bailey.
Arts are very important and are often put on the back burner in school districts for various reasons. This leaves non-athletic students on the bench. How will you go about helping improve, grow, create art programs in our district?
I think one of the ways to do that, and this is in the area of the arts, because it is a co-curricular activity that also includes extracurricular art opportunities, I think one key thing, and it's not just limited to the area of arts, but in particular, this would go a long way to growing our arts programs, is to make sure, just as we're working to do now with the area of science, to build up K-12 alignment within our science program and within our science curriculum, and make sure it's, it is aligned horizontally, it is aligned vertically, that it's a proud of a curriculum, and that's the curriculum that students want to be a part of. Those are the things we also need to be doing in the area of arts. We need to make sure that in that, in that, what sometimes is considered an elective activity, an opportunity, that we are aligning the curriculum pre-K through 12th grade in the arts. If that means expanding upon art opportunities, in the performing arts in particular, and helping some of those trickle down to more opportunities for students at our elementary level, then that's something we need to definitely consider and try to identify resources to make those things happen. But we need, the earlier we get students enthusiastic about athletics, about the arts, about any of those programs, we need to make sure that those opportunities are provided to them early on, and then that the experiences they have within those programs are meaningful, and want them to be a part of the program at the next level. I can tell you full well, I know that the performing arts educators within this district, and this includes those at the elementary level, are passionate about what they do. And they're passionate about whether it be instrumental music or vocal music. And they do what they do because they love music. And I think the more opportunities we can get earlier on to pass that passion on to them and make sure that we have a fully developed, aligned curriculum pre-K through 12 that also encompasses the performing arts is critical to building those programs. And I know we have the dedicated educators within those programs to carry that out if we provide them the opportunity to do so and the resources to do so. And that is also why there are many upgrades within the performing arts area that are included as part of the bond plans that we have moving forward. I also believe full well that there's an actual reason why we need to emphasize and grow our arts program throughout. The younger we allow those opportunities for our students, I know full well that brain research indicates that it opens up students to learning in other areas as well. So that's a meaningful way. I would not be a proponent of reducing our arts programs ever because of just the way that impacts the students' learning abilities and many other subjects overall. And I think we do need to make sure that not only in the performing arts of vocal music and instrumental music, but we potentially need to look at expanding opportunities for students in the areas of drama, and even activities such as debate and those type of things. I think in today's society, and the way we approach disagreements we have with certain people, if we can get back to teaching our students how to engage and how we debate and advocacy for their positions, but to be respectful when doing so, that that would make a great difference in this generation as it moves forward into the world, because I think that unfortunately, that's something that more and more is lacking within the generation that I'm a part of.
Thank you.
Where is curriculum development ranked in comparison to your other strengths?
Curriculum development is lower in my list of strengths. I have other, I have significant more educational experiences in non-curriculum areas, but I know this, since I became the superintendent, I've already been frequently meeting with curriculum leaders within this district. And again, getting a little bit back to Ms. Robinson's question, that's an area where I believe one of my strengths lies in facilitating the curriculum development process. We need to rely upon our curriculum leaders, be it Ms. Crenshaw, be it our building principals, some who have extensive curriculum development experience, and most importantly, and we need to engage our teachers in the curriculum development process. We need to realize, and by facilitate those discussions, what do I do? I can tell you we're not unique in this regard because I had a discussion about this with the superintendent, Dr. Stiles. with the superintendent, Dr. Stiles Simmons from Westwood Community Schools. But one observation I made early on, and it was confirmed by many amongst our administrative team, there are aspects of our district where we function and have functioned in the past as individual schools at individual levels, and unfortunately not as an entire district. That's not to knock anyone for that approach, because like I said, when I sat down with Stiles Simmons, who's somewhat new to Westwood Community Schools, he said he had the same experience when he came on board of Westwood Community Schools. And what was interesting is I think I hit the mark, and he confirmed this, with why some of that developed. When you are a rural socioeconomic district that has access sometimes to an enormous amount of grant funding or title funding, but special funding that some other districts don't receive or other buildings don't receive for various reasons, be it school improvement reasons or otherwise. When you have that grant money, and let's say, as a building, you have access to those specific grant funds, it's easier for you to go to a conference and to see a program that's an important literacy intervention strategy, and to come back and say, this thing is great, and we need it, we need to purchase this now, and we need to, the materials so we can, resources so we can begin to implement this strategy here at this elementary school. What happens is, when you have that money to spend, and they're saying, well, we still have $40,000 to spend, and it's March, so we need to spend it, you tend to, at times, and again, we're not alone in this, to purchase programs that end up being unique to a building that sometimes educators in the other buildings, even administrative leaders in other buildings, aren't even aware that they're using at a particularly great rate. So when I talk about facilitating those conversations, one of the things I touched on early on, and this was through the process, we identified and tackled science first because our science scores on the end step indicated that our science scores were an area that we couldn't prove. It's also an area I learned through discussions with the curriculum process, that it's an area, it's a core subject that hasn't been addressed and re-considered in a number of years. We've more recently updated our ELA curriculum, and even more so our math and social studies curriculum as well. So science was overdue to be looked at. During that process, we identified a whole lot of science programs that were being used across the district. And a lot of them were purchased by different grant funds and different sources, some from general fund, but a lot from other sources. So what that led me to do was to strongly ask that at the end of the day, we need to, my job as the head of the district, is to make sure again that we're building a curriculum that is aligned pre-K through 12. And that's horizontal alignment, much we hope to have two different elementary schools, neighborhood schools K through five. We need to make sure that horizontal alignment's taking place, and we need to make sure that horizontal alignment's taking place, and we need to have the middle school administrators and curriculum leaders and teachers involved in the discussions so they can see and hear firsthand how, what they're doing at the elementary level aligns to what's going on in the middle school. They need to make sure the high school folks are in the room so they can learn the same thing that's happening from middle school to high school. And at times, within those processes, another role of myself as a facilitator, as we learn about different resources and programs and realizing we don't have unlimited funds, and we are trying to build that alignment, there may be times where I might have to break a tie relative to what program we're going to commit to using and look to implement with fidelity. I also think another important role as a facilitator of that process is to make sure that we are implementing programs with fidelity that we choose to offer and utilize within our curriculum process. And we need to, again, getting back to the accountability piece, we need to measure the outcomes and the impact that those things are happening, and we need to give those programs time to be implemented before we return it, potentially that there's something new or something different we shouldn't be trying. If we're investing in curriculum resources, we need to make smart decisions and informed decisions at the forefront, and then we need to give those resources and our teachers a time to become familiar with those resources and measure results over time before we rush to make another quick decision about what's available now.
Trustee Gray.
Have you decided to acquit and all others, such as senior competitors, to make informed or informed decisions? Is that a current question? In hindsight, have you ever considered that you should have had more involvement by others before approving their decisions?
I will address the last part of that question first, in that there are plenty of experiences that I've learned from. And this really gets a little bit at situational leadership. I believe, overall, I prefer a more collaborative leadership style. The superintendent position I've learned throughout this pandemic requires situational leadership. And what do I mean by that? It means that there are times where I have to make quick decisions based on as much information that's available at that time. And that's because some of the circumstances we face and decisions have to be made, have to be made quickly. And in those situations, I'm willing to look at all the information that's available to me within the time I have to make those important decisions and make those decisions. Does that mean that down the road, I don't wish that we had more opportunity to grab more information from more stakeholders and involve them in the decision-making process? There have been instances where that hasn't occurred. But again, there are times when we just need to make the best informed decision we can in the moment because of circumstances of the situation call for decisions to make. I think by and large, we need to look to engage all of our stakeholders, our students, our staff, our frontline teachers, our support staff. We need to look at opportunities where a particular decision, where it can be foreseen that it's going to have an impact on those constituencies and those stakeholders, we need to provide avenues to allow them to have input into the process. And that input may come in various forms, again, depending on the stakeholder group. But where we foresee and should easily foresee an impact of those decisions on those individuals, we need to engage those particular stakeholders within those decisions and give as much information and input from them as possible. And then ultimately, we need to make sure when those decisions are made, that the primary focus of the decisions we make is how this might impact students. And make sure that students are at the forefront of the decisions we're making and realizing that sometimes when students are at the forefront of decisions, there are some unpopular decisions that you may make in terms of some of those stakeholders. But I think that you're acting the best interest of students and keeping students at the center of what we're doing, those are easier decisions to defend.
Thank you, Mr. Whitworth. We're at time now, but we appreciate your continued interest in our superintendent position. We've enjoyed learning more about your skills and background this evening, and we thank you for your time. Is there anything we missed?
I would just like to thank you all for the time and efforts that you have expended in this process. I know it's an important process. I know it's critical to the future of this district. I can tell you full well that first as incoming superintendent, and then most recently as superintendent, that I have enjoyed the opportunity to move certain initiatives forward. And I will greatly appreciate the opportunity with the trust of this school board to continue to work with this board to move those important initiatives forward. I also had the fortune and ability to have a number of years, 16-plus years, of key leadership experience at the central office level within educational organizations. And I believe that I have the skill set to work with the entities within this district and the stakeholders within this district to continue to move these important initiatives that we already have on the way forward. And I look forward to potentially having that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, and you will be forthwith the board's decision to vote. Thank you. We would particularly appreciate the feedback of the candidates that have interviewed tonight. Please submit your feedback using the form at this link.